Excellent, I saw five o'clock on my clock here. So welcome everybody to the West Turlock Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board of Directors meeting for February the 4th. I call the meeting order due to the ongoing COVID-19 crisis and pursuant to executive order into 9/20, this meeting is being held via conference call without a physical meeting location. This meeting was noticed in accordance with the Brown Act in addition to a physical posting of the agenda at 333 East Canal Drive, Turlock, California. The meeting was also noticed on turlockgroundwater.org, social media, social media and email to the sub-basin's ongoing and interesting parties. This meeting is being digitally recorded and will be posted on the Turlock Groundwater YouTube channel and also posted on turlockgroundwater.org. The board secretary is taking minutes as well. Materials presented are available online at turlockgroundwater.org. We encourage public participation during the meeting. Much like an in-person GSA board meeting, we'll receive public comment during the public comment period portion of the agenda early on as well as receive any comment on specific agenda items. If you wish to comment on matters not listed on agenda, please unmute and speak when prompted during public participation. If you wish to comment or ask a question, I items adjusted on the Linda, please unmute and speak during when prompted that agenda or use the raise your hand feature. With that, let's get the meeting started. Fay, can you call the roll?
Good evening, directors. Director Odom?
This is Richard in for David.
Thank you. Director Malvano?
Present.
Newly appointed Director Lopez?
Here.
Newly appointed Director Larson? Espino, Director Espinoza?
Espinoza present.
Director Buck? Director Buck? Director Alvarez?
Here.
Secretary Kieza?
Here.
Vice Chair Drisma?
Here.
Chair Alamo?
Present.
And? So we have enough for a quorum. Let the meeting begin.
Thank you Fay. Moving on, we'll move right into approval of the minutes. Anybody want to entertain or any changes to the approval of the minutes of November the 5th, 2020?
Moved to approve?
And who second? I'm sorry.
Espinoza.
Thank you.
Properly moved by Curtis and seconded by Director Espinoza. Is there any further discussion or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all proceed with I, please.
Aye.
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 In the opposition, same sign? Minutes are approved. Agenda item D, public comment period. Interested persons in the audience or on this virtual meeting are welcome to introduce any topic within the agency's jurisdiction. No action may be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except the board may briefly respond to the comments. Refer the matter to staff or request to be placed on future agenda. Is there any public comment? Fay, do you see any public comment? Any hands raised?
Chair Alamo, I don't see any hands raised. And I just remind those, it looks like there's a couple on the call who who might be members of the public. And just the way to raise those hands at any point in time is to click the reaction button on your Zoom display and in there, there will be a raise hand button, but I see none.
There you are. Do you know public comment? We'll move right into staff updates. Joint tech update. Michael Cook.
Good evening, Chair Alamo, members of the board. The Joint Technical Advisory Committee of the West Turlock and the East Turlock Groundwater Sustainability Agencies have met on four occasions since your last meeting. We're now meeting every two weeks instead of monthly as we start to develop the critical components of the groundwater sustainability plan. On November 19th, we had our first presentation on the baseline modeling scenario, which he which is on your agenda this evening. Through this item, we learned what will happen to groundwater levels if we stay on our current trajectory and points out that a number of management actions will be required to obtain a sustainable groundwater basin in the Turlock area. On December 17th, we received an update from Perry Clausen with Valley Water Collaborative regarding the CV Salts Program. CV Salts is a state water board program aimed to reduce nitrates in groundwater and our area is a priority area for for that action. And we are looking at the options for potential collaborative MOU with Valley Water Collaborative to work on issues of mutual concern. There's mainly groundwater quality, ours is more groundwater quantity, but there are areas where we overlap. So we're looking at options of working collaboratively with them. On January 14th, Todd Groundwater presented us with their findings regarding how continued reductions in groundwater levels could affect surface water in the region, particularly the Toolumi and Merced Rivers, as those rivers could start to seep or lose flow as they look to replace lost groundwater in the area. And on January 28th, we picked up again on establishing sustainable management criteria, particularly looking at minimum water levels that will be acceptable going forward to address the potential for the chronic lowering of groundwater levels. So we're really getting to the point where the rubber meets the road with the development of the sustainability plan. And we'll be working with our counterparts in the East Turlock area to come up with sustainability criteria that are mutually acceptable, but also meet the goals and requirements of the state legislation related to Sigma. We'll also be looking at developing a subcommittee of the Technical Advisory Committee. Again, sorry to create another layer, but as we start putting the plan together, there's a real need to meet more frequently, more nimbly to review issues and then come up with recommendations to the Joint Technical Advisory Committee. So our meeting next week will be developing a subgroup that will represent the various interests of the urban, the ag, the smaller users in the smaller agencies to make sure we can quickly work to meet the state mandate mandated deadline of getting our plan together or submitted by early next year. And then our groundwater recharged assessment tool committee has been meeting most weekly to look at options to recharge groundwater in the area, looking at infrastructure, geology, water that's available to do that type of thing. So we're really gathering steam and let all the board members know to staff that they've assigned to work with us. The technical advisory committee are working very hard and diligently ensuring a great deal of commitment to get this done in time to meet the state deadline. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions. I just want to echo the sentiment that Michael just said, you know, I've sat in on some of those tech meetings and and I know Miguel has and some of the other directors and it definitely is is work taking place. These this team that we put together is going strong and they're really pushing to get it done. That goes with our sub consultants as well. So again, kudos to the team and and feel good about where we're at. And yeah, we got plenty of work to do, but but heading in the right direction.
Any further questions for Michael on the joint tech update? Seeing none, we'll proceed right into the inter basin coordination. Michael?
Chair Alamo, nothing to report in that area. We haven't met with the Merced and Modesto GSA's recently, but we do expect in the near future, as we look at how overdraft in the eastern portion of the Turlock Sub Basin may be affecting the water levels in Merced Sub Basin, the Merced River, and potentially the Toolumi River. So more to come on that and we'll keep you posted.
Thanks for that. Any questions for Michael on that? Hearing none, we'll go right into the GSP update with Debbie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Gotcha.
Great, thanks. Um, so let me pull this up. So thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on where we are with the with the GSP. As you see on the agenda, Phyllis will be providing a presentation on some of the more recent data that the Technical Advisory Committee has been reviewing. So I have a brief, a brief update for you. From a, from a contracting perspective, we're continuing to move forward with providing the necessary progress reports and invoices and what have you that are required for the grant process process that is funding a portion of the GSP. Our next quarterly progress report and invoice is is due later this month. And so we'll be submitting that. We are also that, so as you, as you have seen in several other presentations that that have been provided to the board as we've moved through this development process. We have developed quite a bit of information, including some of the hydrologic information and the water budget information and what have you. And that information will be incorporated into the GSP in what they call the basin setting and some of the other early chapters in the groundwater sustainability plan. And so the consultant team reviewed all of that information with the technical advisory committee and received some comments. They've been in the process of updating the those chapters to incorporate those comments and they'll be providing those revised chapters to the technical advisory committee very soon. And once the technical advisory committee is comfortable with the revisions, then we will be bringing those sections to the board for review as well as the public. So we're pretty excited about the idea of having some initial chapters to bring to this body for their review and and the public as well. So we're making progress and and hope to have something to you here shortly. We're also working on a detailed final schedule for the remaining less than a year that we have left in developing the groundwater sustainability plan. The consulting team is refining that schedule and we'll be working through that with the technical advisory committee at its next meeting here next week. And and then we've been bringing that to the board as well for their review. The idea is that a refined schedule will help keep us on track as we move through the last portion of this development process for our initial GSP and 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 with that, we'll also have a better understanding about what we need to accomplish in the different timeframes to pull everything together. And so, so we'll be reviewing that here, like I said, next week. The other thing I wanted to report on is that we continue to move forward with implementing the second grant as well, which is designed to support the GSP effort. If you recall, there's three projects funded under the second grant. There's a groundwater recharge assessment tool, a programmatic EIR, and five monitoring well sites that will include two multi-depth wells located on the western side of the sub-basin with an RGSP and then three single completion wells over on the eastern portion of the sub-basin. The groundwater recharge assessment tool has been meeting, there's a subcommittee that was formed by the technical advisory committee to work on that project and they've been meeting regularly, working through, understanding the tool, how it can be used and and what information is needed to develop it because each of these tools are developed to are tailored for for the sub-basin or the area that's that's covered by the tool. And so we've talked about different opportunities and projects that might be included into the groundwater recharge assessment tool to enable better use of local resources for recharge, including stormwater that currently flows to the rivers. The consultant team is working with the individual agencies now to gather the data needed to continue developing the tool. The programmatic EIR, we have completed the contracting for that. So we have the consultant in place, but we haven't moved forward with a lot of work on that project yet. That'll be coming here in the coming months. And then the monitoring wells, the well locations have been identified for the East Turlock sites. We have identified one of the wells on the western side and have a lead on the second one. So I'll be bringing that information to you in the coming meetings as well, although I believe that Valerie might have some information regarding the contracting or or the access agreement, I should say, for those wells. So, so that's, that's all I had for you as far as an update goes. There's a lot, a lot of moving parts and a lot of things being developed. And and we'll keep bringing things to you as as they're they coalesce, for lack of a better term for it.
Anybody got any questions for Debbie or comments? Hearing none, we'll proceed with our budget update. Michael?
Thank you, Director Alamo. For January 31st, 2021, the West Turlock account was at $165,184.30. Everything is paid. Everything's kind of up to date. For the basin account, for the same time period, January 31st, we are at $1,058,273.32. We have one pending item and that is that everything else is up to date. And this will probably be the high water mark for the basin account. We will start spending more than getting money in. Our reimbursement is getting close to being done with the DWR. Any questions? And that's it for me.
Director Alamo, we have the public outreach update, please.
Perfect. Yeah, Herb wanted to go. I just got the chat on him. So we'll let him talk, I guess. Any questions for Michael? Hearing none, you're on.
Thank you, Chair Alamo. I have three brief items here. Yeah, first is, since you last met in November, we've held three groundwater lunch hour sessions, November 13th, December 18th, and then more recently, last week or actually left probably a little bit, yeah, last week, if not before that, January 29th. And we plan to have another in February or at February's end. They're just really informal sessions that are driven by the questions that stakeholders have. We get anywhere from, I'd say, seven, three to seven stakeholders that are not involved with staff, that are not staff that are helping out. And we just open it up for an hour and answer some questions and provide general information on the timeline of the GSP, how to get involved and a lot of other things. And they've been helpful. There've been some good discussions and we continue to have those in lieu of any major workshops that we have. And so look for information about our February groundwater lunch hour as soon as we develop a date, but it'll probably be toward the end of the month. It's been what we've been doing recently. And then the second item I have is the Turlock Sub Basin Stakeholder Survey is still open. We opened it back in summer of last year and we have 34 responses thus far. And we continue to find ways to encourage people to do that. And we have links to the English and Spanish versions on top, the turlockgroundwater.org website. So I'm always encouraging people to to take that, take that. And I presented a brief, little early report of the, back then it was, I think, 31 responses to the tack last week and and presented that. Last item I have here is the the Ad Hoc Communications Committee, which which reports to the tack. The Turlock Sub Basin Tech is working on the second video. We remember we did a Sigma 101 video about a year ago, a little bit, more like 14, 15 months ago, and that was successful. And so now we're working on a second video with the same vendor that's going to be on the basics of water budget. And so we have some questions about that and trying to make that a little bit more, less confusing actually for stakeholders and how that relates to the Turlock Sub Basin. And so we're in the early phases of that, but I wanted to to report that. Other than that, we're just gearing up for public comment period regarding the GSP later this year, how to advertise that, how to intake comment and work with the technical team. And so that is my brief update unless there are any questions.
I'm not hearing any questions. So thank you for that update. We'll move right into our agenda items. First up is the election of the board and officers. I will entertain a motion. We'll start with the election of board for this two-year term. Our most recent one was February 7th. So we're due for 2019. So we're due for another election.
Mr. Chair, is there any limitations? Can you serve another term? There's no limitation, is there?
I do not believe so. Valerie, do you know?
No, there are no limitations. You can serve unlimited consecutive terms.
Okay, so I'm going to, I will make a motion for Joe to return as chair. I think that serving one more term will be sufficient. I probably wouldn't do it again, but I think we're we're in a extremely critical time and I would like to put Joe's name and nomination for chair again.
I'll second that.
Properly moved and second. Is there any other nominations for the office of chair? Nobody else wants to take this job over? It's not. Okay, it is a motion. So all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Motion passed. Motion passed.
Motion passed, Fay. Thank you. And then we'll entertain the same thing for vice chair, same two-year period.
So Curtis is currently serving, I think, and I would put his name in for continuity.
Espino, a second.
Properly moved and second. Is there any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, we'll close nominations and look for a motion for the vice chair. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, same sign? Hearing none, congratulations, Curtis. Unanimous.
Thanks, Joe.
So now we'll move on to secretary and treasurer. I believe Director Kieza is serving as secretary and Michael Clipper is currently serving as treasurer.
Well, I'll stick with the continuity and motion to have Vito serve as secretary for another term.
Espino, a second too.
Thank you, Curtis. Thank you, Rodrigo. We've got a veto for secretary for another two-year term. Is there any other nominations for secretary? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, same sign?
Aye.
I don't know if Richard was opposing that or just came in a little late.
I came in late. Apologize.
Oh, no, no problem. I was just saying, no unanimous for veto, but I guess he got unanimous.
Yeah, yeah, we'll give it to him.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, we'll move on to treasurer. What's your pleasure on treasure?
I think Michael Clipper is currently serving as our treasurer. Is that correct? For TID, as the agent, let's, let's keep it going. Michael Clipper for treasurer.
I will second.
Any further nominations for treasurer? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Pose, same sign? Congratulations, Michael. Another two-year term as treasurer.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to agenda item number two, appointment of the technical advisory committee officers. Valerie?
Yep. Hi, welcome everyone. Valerie Kincaid, counsel for the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA. Congratulations to the new members who were elected into office. And I know this is overwhelming to serve on these kinds of boards. So feel free to feel free to ask questions when you need to. If there's feedback or someone's not on mute, that's all right. Can everyone still hear me? Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, so this board, this JPA and the board decided a few years ago, when it first started, to make the tack, the technical advisory committee, its executive director. That is is still ongoing. And as you heard at the beginning of the meeting, those folks on the tack team report as an executive director would. So on February 7th, 2019, the this body elected a chair and a vice chair of Michael Cook, who was then serving as city of Turlock, and Lacy, who was then serving for Merced County. Those positions need to be reappointed. My understanding is that the tack is recommending Michael Cook in his new capacity from TID to be chair, and Karen Morgan with the city of Series, who's been an outstanding tack member as vice chair. So those are the recommendations. If folks have questions about the structure or what needs to happen, please let me know. But at this point, we're looking for a motion to appoint the recommended members of Michael Cook as chair and Karen Morgan as vice chair.
So moved, Kieza.
Second. I second. Richard Lindo. Or Curtis can do it also.
No, Richard, get your name in there.
Thanks a lot.
Richard Lindo first, so there's a second. We're probably moving to second and take the recommendation of the tech committee. Is there any comments or any other questions on this agenda item?
I just have one comment and that's that Lacy has done a great job as vice chair. And it's a lot of work. It probably, you know, we come before you every once in a while, but it's a lot of work. She's done a great job and I certainly appreciate all the things she's done as vice chair.
I will definitely agree with that.
Thank you for all that hard work, Lacy. Any other comments or questions on this agenda item? Hearing none, I will pursue to the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose, same sign? Motion passes. Valerie, you're up again. Form 700.
Sure, this is an exciting topic that everyone loves. So I'm glad to take it on. The Fair Political Practices Commission requires all elected officials or public employees that influence government decisions to fill out Form 700s. Most folks who have been elected before know what these are. This is This is not a, this is just an informational item that you will see. The from the secretary, those being sent out to not only the members of this board, but the tack. It's a reminder that we do have to fill them out. They are required to be kept in house. I think the deadline is April one. They are the purpose, of course, is to disclose financial interests and potentially flag any conflicts of interest. So even though they are annoying, please, everyone fill them out, send them back to Fay. Let's get them on on file. So if they're ever checked, we have them ready to go. If folks have questions about them or if they need to file them or what to put in them. Feel free to reach out to myself or Fay. We'll give you direction as needed, but just an informational item that they're coming out and do April one.
Chair, I'd like to say something. Members and directors, I will be sending out the form seven hundreds by. February fifteenth, and if they could be sent back to me by March nineteenth. As a scanned and then the original wet signature will be going to TID Tammy Walber. I think that's how you pronounce her name, and she will be then sending it out to the state for me.
Thank you, Fay. Any other comments on this item? We'll move on to a license agreement for the GRAT. Valerie?
Yep, great. So Debbie mentioned this in her report, but this body had received funding to to. License with the. The groundwater assessment, groundwater recharge assessment tool. That's what GRAT stands for. To try to determine what areas in our basin would be helpful to put recharge basins in if we want to. And and really look around to see where and how recharge could be best. Facilitated. So in order to do that, we need to enter into as the the West Turlock GSA board needs to enter into as the grantee. For that money, a license with the GRAT folks. So we went back and forth and that that agreement is in your packet. It's entitled the GRAT end user agreement. If folks have questions on it, I'm happy to provide them. But basically, it says, we as the West Turlock. Will use the GRAT tool. We will not steal or otherwise sub license out the tool, but all data that's. Produced from using the tool will be owned by West Turlock. So those are the important components is that we're not going to steal their tool. And they're going to give us all the resulting data that comes from that tool, which is what we need and and want to develop the GSP. And of course, use the GRAT. At tool in the future. There were two exhibits that went with it, and that was the scope of work and the budget. Those are part of a larger agreement. But the GRAT end user is before this. Board for review and recommendation for approval, so we can start putting in information actually using the tool. Any questions or thoughts? I'm happy to take them.
There's no questions. I'll entertain your pleasure. This is an action item.
Move to authorize the board chair to sign the agreement on behalf of the GSA.
There's a second.
Here's a second.
Thank you. If they're properly moved and seconded, is there any other further comments on this action item? And all in favor, please say aye.
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 Close same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceed with action item number five, the GSP update. Phyllis.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me to come to you today and share some of our technical information that we've been developing for the GSP. Is everyone able to see my screen? Yep. Great. Thank you so much. All right. So um, our meeting agenda today is going to answer a series of questions. I think that. When you present a lot of technical information, especially a lot of graphs and charts right at a time of day when folks have had a full day's work and they're. Headed toward dinner, that sometimes we can ask ourselves, what is it we're trying to learn from all of this technical information? So I hope to kind of address these questions as we go through it. What are the projected water budgets? Just what are they? How are they being used in the GSP? How were they prepared? And then what are the results? We'll talk about the results being impacts on groundwater, the results being impacts on surface water, the results being impacted by subsurface flows. Sometimes between subbasins and then sort of putting all of this together. What are these potential future water budgets? So with that, let me get right into this first slide. And I know that everyone hears the word water budgets, and it's like, aren't you finished with those water budgets yet? There are so many of them that you're doing for the GSP. And so this is just a summary of the water budgets that are required by the regulations and where we are in this process. So we've completed the historical conditions water budget. That was a twenty five year period, water year nineteen ninety one through two thousand and fifteen. A little bit of understanding of where we've been in this sub basin. And then current conditions covering water year twenty fifteen. That may seem a little less than current, but that was the last year that we had for our integrated surface water groundwater models. That was the last year of the model. So we looked at that as well, and that's been completed. And then recently completed, and what I'd like to talk about tonight are the projected conditions water budgets. This is looking into the future and projecting land use, water use, and facing that on fifty years of historical information of hydrology. All of which is an averaged hydrologic condition within the sub basin. So we're using these as forecasts for the future. I want to emphasize this, and you'll hear me say this over and over again in this presentation, that it is a forecast of the future. If we don't do any actions at all, and of course, that won't be the case. But we want to give ourselves the opportunity to see, you know, if we continue on the path we're on right now, what are the impacts? And that will help us plan with respect to the groundwater sustainability plan. We have one more. Projected water budget in progress. Right now, we are required by the state to look at climate change factors that are provided to us by DWR. And we will be doing that along with that forty year forecast. So we're looking at that now. But tonight, we're going to talk about the projected future conditions, and I'll be referring to it from time to time as our baseline. We'll start with a groundwater contour map. This is for two thousand fifteen groundwater conditions. And what we saw from the historical work that we've done on the historical data is that we do have overdraft in the sub basin. And declining water levels primarily in the eastern sub basin as identified with this sort of cone of depression that you might see by the circled and closed contours. Shown on the water level contour map. Our projected water budget. Forecast the future groundwater conditions, starting here and then going forward fifty years. If no projects or management actions are implemented. So it's not what we think will happen. Because we certainly are going to manage this groundwater basin, but it's what could potentially happen if no actions are taken. The forecast looks at. Tabulation of inflows and outflows over again, a fifty year period. It's the planning and implementation horizon for the groundwater sustainability plan. Again, providing a baseline without projects or management actions. You know, you might think of this, if if you're used to hearing sequoia language, it's sort of a no project condition with respect to looking into the future. We're going to use these results in several ways, one of which is to assist us with what we're doing right now, which is the selection of sustainable management criteria. And or our undesirable results. We want to target the volumes that these water budgets are telling us for our projects and management actions to make sure that we. Are bringing the basin into sustainability with respect to what the future forecasts are telling us. Here is a tabulated. Accounting, so to speak, of how we have set up these baseline conditions in the model. And it talks about the features on the left and then all of the details that we have associated with that feature in the model. You might just scan through this and see that for land use, we are required to look at the current conditions. And unless we know for sure exactly where and how land use is going to change, we really hold that constant throughout our baseline. And in particular, we're holding the land use constant for the agricultural acreage in the sub basin. We're also looking at agricultural demand, surface water supply, and then the urban component. The urban component is the one component that actually will increase in demand over the the fifty year baseline. We know that because we have projections from current planning documents that are already being provided by the municipalities. To the Department of Water Resources, and that is primarily their urban water management plans. So we've been using the planning documents and all of the other information that we've compiled for the model to set up this baseline run. And this is a tabulation of water supply and demand, and I want to use it in two ways. One is just to say that this is agricultural water use. But I also want to point out the way that we've organized some of this information because you'll see the same organization again and again. On the left portion of this chart, we have the historical period. That's that twenty five year period that we talked about for the historical water budget. And then that period is followed by this fifty years of the baseline projected future simulation. So you will often be able to see these charts and graphs as I move through the presentation whereby you can compare. What do these changes look like sort of from the historical time period into the future? So that's sort of how I've organized a lot of this information, and I've been working directly. I should have given a shout out right away to our sub consultant team. Woodard and Curran, who has done the modeling for all of this work and and put in a tremendous amount of effort to. To distill really detailed and very complex technical information. So that it can be used and understood and applied by our managers. This chart here that shows water supply and demand for agricultural use in the basin includes the surface water deliveries in blue. Agricultural pumping in gray, and that is balanced by the demand numbers that are shown here on the. The negative portion of this particular graph. So we're looking really, if you if you just sort of squint your eyes and stand back a bit. We're really just generally keeping the agricultural operations, the demand, surface water deliveries and pumping. Relatively constant in the sub basin with respect to the historical condition. Of course, you'll see a lot of variability from year to year to year based on hydrology. For the urban demand, as I had mentioned previously, we're actually projecting increases in population. And as a result of that, increases in demand associated with this water supply and demand picture now for the urban water use in the basin. Historical, you can see sort of where we've landed. You can see that there's been quite a bit of conservation, a decreasing demand here and a. And a commensurate decreasing in and urban pumping associated with that as well. But we do think that even though the per capita water use may be dropping, our population increases are going to result in an increase in urban demand going forward. So that is how the baseline conditions are set up, and we will start looking at the results if. Unless you have questions on what we're doing with the baseline, or if there's anything else you want to know right now before we move forward.
Phyllis, I had a couple of questions. Did you go back one slide?
Absolutely.
On the agriculture demand, like you had mentioned, it looks like it's staying pretty constant. But there's been a recent switch over to some of. Drip and other more sustainable and using less per acre and plus with the increase in urban demand, you're going to have some. Less acreage in that. In the agriculture area, just from getting transitioned into the. Residential and urban areas, but I don't see that in this graph at all.
So a couple of things. One thing is, is that this demand and supply balance already incorporates. Into it, and it's difficult to just see from looking at this chart because we did have some changing land use that occurred in this historical period. But we do incorporate the modern. Irrigation practices into this project. And so for baseline, we are assuming. Highly efficient irrigation practices throughout most of the sub basin, and in particular in the eastern sub basin. That actually is also built into these later years of the historical time period. So it's a little bit difficult to. To sort of see that by looking at these data, but I do want to assure you that we have considered that. With respect to your other point, it's a very good one. If we're going to increase in urban demand, then isn't that the potential? Going to be that it's going to take some land that is now agricultural lands out of production. And the reality is, is that the urban communities couldn't quite help us better understand exactly where that might occur. There is undeveloped land in some of the areas, and there's going to be some additional sort of higher density building. In within the the urban areas. So there is only a minimal amount of land conversion that's being assumed in this future baseline. And we all recognize that that could change, but it's just very difficult for the urban communities to make those projections for us. And rather than introduce a lot of uncertainty into the baseline, we went ahead and kept this conservative approach. That there would continue to be the agricultural demand in the future, recognizing, of course, that that can change. Does that make sense?
Somewhat.
We're we're really, we're really thinking in terms of the the add conversion acreage as being something that we will look at as we begin to develop projects.
Any other questions for Phil, Phil so far?
Okay, then I will proceed with some of their results. And here's where we are on the list of questions that we are tackling. So as we get into the results, I I thought we would first start by looking at. Some very detailed components of the groundwater first. And in doing that, we're calling these operational water budgets. And so the the reason that they have sort of this. This different name to them is that we're going to focus on things that happen at the surface on the groundwater basin. Recharge and extraction primarily, things that the managers have control over and can use directly. And and it does not include the interaction with the rivers or the subsurface flows. Just for the purposes of better understanding the projected water budget. So what we're going to be doing with, beginning with this. Is we're going to be just sort of parsing out the results piece by piece, and then we'll put them all together in the end. So just hang in there with me as we go through what I'm calling operational budgets. Again, we're just really looking at groundwater recharge and extraction. So let's, let's see what those look like with respect to this historical and future baseline. So the graph on the left is where we'll start. This is looking at the Turlock sub basin, the entire sub basin numbers together. And we see green is percolation of precipitation of applied water irrigation return flows. Recharge to the groundwater basin, and the purple is representative of unlined canal seepage. Other spills. Recharge and seepage from Turlock Lake, for example, is included in this. And then we have groundwater pumping in the gray on the negative portion of the charge. And so the way that we're using this information and data is that we're taking the recharge components. And we're subtracting the extraction components to determine what our net is with respect to either contributing water to the groundwater system or taking water out of the groundwater system. And so the Turlock basin overall, you can see if we begin to subtract out these gray bars from the purple plus green bars. We get mostly a net extraction, a negative associated with that. And there are some numbers that we have provided for you comparing the historical time period to the baseline time period. So this is just, again, looking at the entire sub basin together. We can split this out among the GSAs, and we've done that for this particular operational budget. And so if we look at the next slide, we will look first at the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA. And if you did the same subtraction of the recharge components, which is the positive portion of the chart, and then subtracted out the extraction components on the negative portion of the chart, you actually see that these bars generally are higher. And as a result of that, you get a negative, I mean, a positive net recharge to the sub basin. So because of the surface water supply that the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA has for the agricultural growers in the area, overall, the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA is a net contributor to groundwater. This also is in response to the Turlock Irrigation District's Conjunctive Use Program, which looks to make sure that the groundwater basin is recharged with any excess water that they may have over time. For the Eastern Luxe Basin GSA, it's more difficult for them because they don't have the surface water supply. And as a result of that, their entire agricultural operations are dependent pretty much solely on groundwater. There is some additional recharge associated with their with that GSA. But overall, you can see that if you did that same subtraction, you would get a net extraction again from the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA, an indication of why the water levels have been declining in that area and why we have an expanding cone of depression. So those are the results for the, when I'm calling operational budgets here, the recharge and extraction. Any questions on those few slides before we move to surface water?
Just a general, go ahead, Vito.
I just want to make sure that because this isn't a part of our packet, if we could get these slide deck.
Absolutely, you can. And I will do that as soon as this slide, this meeting is over. This portion of the meeting is over.
Phyllis, I was just going to ask for any anyone that happens to view these after the fact. You know, when you see a discrepancy between the West Turlock Sub Basin and the Eastern Luxe Basin, like you just showed on the last two slides, what, you know, thinking about as we're going to progress over the next few months, what does that do to this GSP that we're putting together with them? You know, it almost seems like, you know, one side's doing, doing their work and the other side's, you know, having some, some struggles or some issues with that. You know, how does that affect our plan as a whole as we, as we start to dive into the latter phases of development?
Well, as a consultant, I can just tell you that I've seen a lot of cooperations between the two GSAs as we begin to work forward. I think everyone is looking for a solution. We need to come up with a solution on a sub basin basis. I have parsed a lot of our information and technical details among the two GSAs because that has been their request. And I think that they have asked for that just so that there's planning associated with what their numbers show up. And when I say their numbers, I mean the Western Luxe Basin GSA as well as the Eastern Luxe Basin GSA. There is, within the Western Luxe Basin GSA, the urban areas do have some overdraft conditions locally. And as a result of that, they're going to be looking to projects to solve that issue, in particular with some surface water, additional surface water. And then the Eastern Luxe Basin GSA has been very active with respect to identifying projects as well. In fact, they are doing some pilot recharge testing. I've been made aware along Mustang Creek now. So I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, Curtis, how to answer the question except for to say that the GSP needs to demonstrate future sustainability for the entire sub basin.
And I think that's kind of where I was going with it is, is to get your take on it and have you basically say what you did, that, that this is a group effort. You know, no matter what the, the information says, you know, no matter what we come up with, the good, the bad, the indifferent or ugly, you know, we, we've all got to work together. And I think that's been kind of the testament of these groups, whether it be the directors or the TAC, up to this point, is, is just that idea that, hey, we're, we're all in this one together and we got to find a way to make it work.
Absolutely. And the one thing that we can't, you know, there's, we, we need to look at the technical data, you know, we need to just say, okay, what is, what is so? And where do we have water levels declines? That's what we need to address. So I think, I think that through the joint TAC, we've been doing that.
Are you getting any questions on the data that you guys have put together?
From the TAC members in particular or from the public or?
Either or.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard a lot of detailed questions from the public with regards to the details, but certainly the, the tag members are very engaged, as you know, for, for all of, all of the water budget materials that we've been putting together.
For, for any member of the public that may be watching this video, if they did have a question or thought or, you know, problem, issue, whatever it may be, what's the best way for them to get their question out there?
Herb will be so proud of me for knowing the answer to this. Please go to turlockgroundwater.org. There, there are so many helpful things on the Turlock groundwater website, one of which is you just click a little button, put your email in, and you're going to get notified of everything. I know we all get overloaded sometimes with too many emails these days, but, but these, these meetings are, are open to the public. The TAC has been adamant at making sure that these are public meetings. And I know that the public attends and, you know, maybe sometimes their eyes glaze over as we're going through technical information. But, you know, they have, they have hung in there with us. And as you know, we've, we've seen these TAC meetings be really well attended. We have several Turlock citizens that attend most of them. And so I really, you know, my, my thanks go out to all of those who have hung in there with us through this slog of material that we constantly put everybody through, including all of you today. So thank you. Okay, so let's move now to the next topic of the results from the projected water budget, which is the surface water impacts. And this has to do with the river boundaries along our sub basin, the Tuolumne, the Merced and the San Joaquin. And I just wanted to put a shout out here. We've done a tremendous amount of work with Turlock Irrigation District, with Merced Irrigation District, and also with information from the state to make sure that our future projected baseline modeling and analysis incorporates the best information that we can with respect to future operations of the Tuolumne, Merced and San Joaquin River. And so here is just a list of the information and data that we've been provided by others for our modeling work. I wanted to start with a little conceptual diagram because sometimes it's helpful to get us all on the same page when I start saying things like gaining and losing. So the first thing I want to say is this, we have a groundwater system and a surface water system. And depending on where you're talking from, you, you can gain from one and lose from the other. So we typically talk about gaining and losing with respect to the streams, the rivers themselves. So a river is referred to as a gaining stream or a losing stream. If it's a gaining stream, it means that the water table is sufficiently high, as shown here in this little diagram, the water table is shown and groundwater is shown by this blue color here. It's sufficiently high such that water is actually flowing from the groundwater system into the river system. This is base flow. This is why a river will run when you have no releases upstream. You have seeps and springs along the river channel of groundwater moving into the river. If the groundwater table is lower than the river stage, then there will likely be recharge to the groundwater system. And we refer to that as a losing stream, a losing river. And if that water level is declined enough beneath the channel, then the groundwater system actually becomes disconnected from the river system. In the Turlock Sub Basin, we have at least some level of interconnection, i.e. gaining or losing along each of our river boundaries, the Merced, the Tuolumne and the San Joaquin. During her historical study period, we found that the Tuolumne and the San Joaquin rivers were actually net gaining rivers. The Merced River was a slightly losing river on average. As we went into the future, however, that sort of flipped a bit. The future baseline suggests that the Tuolumne River is actually going to transition to a slightly losing stream and that the, the losses that we see on the Merced River will actually increase. I mean, this makes sense because if you have declining water levels within a sub basin, then you will often induce more stream flow depletion. So it's this sort of condition where as water levels decline, you induce more and more recharge. And finally, you get full recharge from the river toward the groundwater system. So the projected future baseline suggests that as our water levels decline, we might be losing water from the stream to the groundwater more often. A referred, something referred to in the regulations as stream flow depletion. Stream flow depletion is recharge. And in my world of groundwater, that's a good thing. But with respect to this particular sub basin, we have other issues to be considered. We have, we have to think about whether or not stream flow depletion and increases in that depletion over time will adversely impact surface water rights. Or will it hurt ecosystems such as groundwater dependent ecosystems that have root zones that go down to the groundwater system? So these are things that we're going to be working through with the TAC members. We need to define undesirable results for a stream flow depletion. And we need to come up with sustainable management criteria to make sure that we don't adversely impact surface water or ecosystems. Moving along from that, we have little dots on the map along the river boundaries on this diagram that show conditions at each node in the model. So the model is looking at all of these points along these river systems and determining at each one of these points whether the system is mostly gaining, mostly losing or mixed. In reality, many of these nodes are mixed. As you can imagine, this groundwater system is dynamic. And with recharge from the rivers, it's even more dynamic. And as a result of that, you will often get nodes that will switch from time to time, month to month, season to season, and certainly year to year. And what we have here is a ten year period out of our historical simulation and a ten year period, the first ten year periods of the baseline simulation. And we have color coded each one of the nodes along them, the Merced, the San Joaquin and the Tuolumne rivers, as to whether they're mostly gaining, mostly losing, or mostly mixed. So the, what I'm trying to illustrate with this diagram is that if we look at the last ten years of the historical simulation, let's take the Merced for example. We see that, that the upper reach of the Merced is mostly orange, meaning it's mostly losing. That means that there's recharge from the river going into the groundwater system. As you get downstream on the Merced River, you get into more mixed conditions and even some gaining conditions. Part of the reason that we have this losing reach sort of moved downstream on the Merced is when you have, again, declining water levels, you induce more recharge from the river. And as we continue to decline water levels into the baseline simulation, you can see that these orange dots move down river a bit more than they were in the historical time period. So this is the increase in stream flow depletion that we're looking at with respect to future conditions, potential future conditions. Remember, it doesn't mean it's going to happen. It means we're projecting more future depletion from the rivers if we don't arrest water level declines. The San Joaquin is less impacted, as you know, it's got a lot more flow in that river and it's controlled by a variety of other circumstances other than our input. So that the San Joaquin doesn't change as much. And then the Tuolumne has the same picture as the Merced, yet it's not quite as disconnected yet as the Merced. But you do see gaining reaches along the Tuolumne in the historical period that have turned into either mixed or in some cases, more losing conditions in the baseline. So we look at that every year on graphs to help us understand what the volumes might be associated with all of this. So what we see here is the Tuolumne River in blue on the top, the San Joaquin in the sort of brown color in the middle, and then Merced in the green on the bottom. Looking first at the Tuolumne River, we're, again, we're looking at historical conditions on the left, baseline conditions on the right. And we're looking at this from groundwater budgets. Remember, we're doing a groundwater sustainability plan. So the groundwater budgets are the perspective of what we're looking at. What that means is that if you have a negative with respect to a groundwater budget, then that means you're losing groundwater. So you have a negative thirty five thousand, so you're losing groundwater. And in this particular case, you're losing this groundwater to the Tuolumne River. In other words, your groundwater levels are high enough that you are actually contributing some water to the Tuolumne River. And this is a gaining stream situation. But we're projecting as we go forward without additional management actions that we're going to see some flipping of some of the river systems whereby we actually have more water being recharged to groundwater from the river system than being supplied to the river system. In other words, there's more positive increases on this chart for groundwater than there was in the historical period. And the difference here is shown by our numbers. This averages about negative thirty five thousand acre feet a year of base flow to the river in the historical period. And that flips to a positive number, about four thousand acre feet a year now recharge from the Tuolumne River. So a difference there of somewhere around thirty nine thousand acre feet a year with respect to prediction of what would happen in the future. The San Joaquin River doesn't have as much impact as we had mentioned earlier. So you can see that these numbers are closer together and they're both negative. So our groundwater system continues to feed the San Joaquin River. I know that many of the growers on the west side know that groundwater levels are relatively high in that area. And the closer you get to the river, they're very stable. And as a result of the high water levels there, we're actually feeding base flow to the San Joaquin River. A little less is projected in the baseline scenario, but the, the differences are relatively small, especially compared to the other river systems. And the Merced, of course, is the one where we really are increasing the depletion out of the Merced River into the, the sub basin as indicated by the baseline. And so what we see in the historical period is that there was an average of about seventeen thousand acre feet a year of recharge from the Merced River to the Turlock Sub Basin. And in the baseline condition, over fifty years, we were projecting that if we don't do anything, that we would increase stream flow depletion from the Merced River into the Turlock Sub Basin, an average of sixty thousand two hundred and eighty acre feet a year. The difference between those two is what the difference is in the stream flow depletion for the baseline component. So that is the summary of the projected conditions baseline on surface water. And if anyone has any questions on the surface water component of that, this would be a good time to ask. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move along. Hang in there with me. We are getting close to the bottom. Our, next to the last question that we're asking is what's going on with the subsurface flows? And again, we're going to look at the subsurface flows with respect to the sub basin first, and then each GSA. Subsurface flows means beneath the rivers. It's within the aquifer system and it's in and out along the boundaries of our sub And it's in and out along the boundaries of our sub-basin as well as in and out from one GSA to another. So you might, you might appreciate that in a very dynamic system, these, these, these flows change over time and with location. But in order to help us better understand exactly what we are contributing to other sub-basin groundwater and what other groundwater sub-basins are contributing to us, we just simply look at it from a sub-basin standpoint, of course, over time. So these are net numbers. And we're going to be talking about numbers for the whole sub-basin, which would be our interactions with Modesto Sub Basin to the north, our interactions with the Delta Mendota Sub Basin to the west, and our interactions with the Merced Sub Basin to the south. And then we are going to be looking at them from a GSA perspective. With respect to the sub-basin, you can see that most of the inflows that we have into our sub-basin are from the Merced Sub Basin. The key at the bottom of these charts, we'll, we'll color-coding the subsurface flows. So the Merced Sub Basin flows are pink. And most of our outflows that are on the negative portion here go into the Delta Mendota Sub Basin. We discussed earlier that we have high water level conditions on the western side near the San Joaquin River. So not only do we feed the river itself, but we also feed the aquifer beneath the river toward the Delta Mendota Sub Basin. So that's the picture with respect to the historical period versus the baseline. And we do see an increase in the inflows from Merced. It's just a little bit difficult to get the picture just looking at this, this graph in and of itself. But for the most part, conditions are generally the same as they are in the historical time period. Looking at this on a sub-basin level for the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA, you can see that we have some small component of those Merced Sub Basin inflows are coming into the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA. That means it's coming into the sub-basin in the western portion where the Merced, where the, the Merced Sub Basin and the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA share a boundary. But they're not quite as large as they are coming in on the east. But what is a large flow here and is indicated by this sort of orange-yellow color is the outflows from the West Turlock Sub Basin into the East Turlock Sub Basin. You might recall from the water level contour map that we looked at early in the presentation that we see the cone of depression in the eastern sub-basin expanding into the west. And so that's pulling water and reversing flow in the groundwater basin from west to east. And so as a result of that, we're getting a large amount of subsurface flow. And this is again, you know, in the aquifer system from the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA into the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA. And so if that's happening on the negative side here, then of course it has to be balanced with it happening on the positive side when we look at the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA boundary and subsurface flows. And again, you can see that most of the subsurface flows are actually coming from within the Turlock Sub Basin rather than outside of the Turlock Sub Basin, from the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA groundwater. This is rather than going to the west-northwest as it would under typical conditions. And then there's the Merced Sub Basin flows that we've talked about and shown on the graphs earlier that are coming into this sub-basin. And this, and because the, most of the water levels are lower in the east, then that induces subsurface flow from Merced into the Turlock Sub Basin in that area as well. So those are the three pictures of subsurface flow. Hang in there with me. We're almost done. Anybody have any questions on subsurface flows and what they mean or any of these data? Okay. So let's round the bend and put everything together into what we call our baseline water budgets. So we're going to start with a graph that you've seen before, which is the purple-green graph of recharge and the gray graph of extraction. And you can see this is for the Turlock Sub Basin, historical period, baseline period. So if we look at this, we build on this with the other components that we've been talking about. And the first build that we're going to do is the stream river, the aquifer river system, the blue that we've been talking about. So here comes the blue. So in the historical period, we were mostly contributing to the river system. And according to the baseline, it's projecting that in the future, the river system will actually contribute more to the groundwater basin, that there'd be more stream flow depletion from three river systems, mostly from the Merced River, if you can remember the discussion that we had on surface water. Okay, so here comes the yellow. The yellow represents subsurface flows. So we just talked about subsurface flows. We're getting a lot of feedback from someone. Hope, hope everyone can hear me okay. Oh, thank you. Some just stopped. And so looking at the yellow now, we can see that the conditions haven't changed that much. We were getting subsurface inflow on a net basis in the historical period. And we continue to get subsurface inflow in the baseline period from the adjacent areas. So these, and we're looking for the Turlock Sub Basin here. So all of the yellow that we're seeing here is from adjacent sub-basins. This is looking at the whole, the, the whole Turlock Sub Basin together. And so the last little component that we put in to complete our, our sub-basin is the orange. And, and when the orange came in, all of my labels popped up. So now it looks extremely, extremely busy. But let's talk about the orange quickly first. So you can see that the orange is shown on the top and the bottom of these graphs. And the orange is the ability to balance the graphs. So the only, the only way the orange comes into the graph is when one of the bars is shorter and the bar adjacent to it. For example, here we have a short, short little gray bar but a relatively long recharge bar, green, purple, blue, et cetera. So the way to get the, this bar here to balance, we add the orange. And so in this particular case, this is the, the positive, remember, it's, it includes recharge and water coming into the groundwater system. And this is water going out of the groundwater system. So what this means is there's, we, we have more recharge than we did pumping. So when the orange is on the bottom portion of this chart, then that's an increase in groundwater and storage. Conversely, if we have a situation where we don't have as much recharge, but we have more subtraction, we need to put the orange on the top portion of the bar to balance the bar so that this bar length here equals this bar length here. And that means that we are pulling water out of storage and depleting our surface water supply. So orange on the top in this particular case is not what we want to see overall. We would rather see orange on the bottom. And you can see from the drought conditions that we really get a lot of orange on the top. That's when we really begin to pour water out of storage. As we go into the baseline, we don't quite have as much orange on the top, even during droughts, although we have some. It's not quite as big as this. And that's because we have pulled water from the rivers and we have pulled water from other sub-basins into our sub-basin to make up for it. So the cone of depression is expanding and will find water wherever it can. And as it gets bigger, it will pull water from, first of all, within the sub-basin and then ultimately from other sub-basins and also from the river. So that's the story that we see with respect to what could happen for the future conditions within the Turlock Sub Basin. And then just to end, we'll quickly go through the GSA perspective. So from the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA, what we see here is that there's a lot of yellow on the bottom and it's increasing. And most of that is subsurface outflow. It says to adjacent areas, but in this particular case, it's a GSA area. So the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA, yellow on the bottom here is mostly going to the low water levels that we have in the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA. And so as a result of that, when we look at the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA, the yellow moves to the top. In other words, that's water contributing to the groundwater system in the east because of the low water levels. Any questions on the, the Turlock Sub Basin or the GSA projected water budgets? Okay, seeing none, we have our final slide. So where are we headed now? Well, there are upcoming modeling scenarios that are being worked on right now, which is why you have me in front of you instead of the modelers. They pull some long hours these days. They're doing climate change analysis right now with guidance from the Department of Water Resources on how to look at climate change factors for the future. They're also putting things together for a sustainable yield analysis to help us with our ongoing selection of sustainable management criteria. That's what we're in the throes of right now, is really trying to nail down. This is the hard part. It's the quantification, looking at the metrics and trying to select what is an undesirable result. You know, we're, we're maybe not the first group because the critically overdrafted basins have been through this in front of us. But DWR hasn't approved any of those plans yet either. So we still don't know exactly where we all land. And we're doing all of this for the first time. So I just want to point out that, you know, the technical people, including myself, were trying really hard to get this right. But the reality is this, these are new concepts, new terms. We're just now beginning to fully recognize how they're going to be implemented. And as a result of that, we're going to do the best we can. The sub-basin is going to put the hard work in and the effort in to select sustainable management criteria. And then we're going to need to adaptively manage this basin for the future. And we're going to do that through projects and management actions. And that's already, lists have already been developed. The East Turlock Sub Basin GSA has already implemented some components, I'll say, to make sure that their recharge projects are viable and can demonstratively add to the groundwater storage. So working hard and things are going. And thank you for listening to my 50-year projected future baseline. Be glad to answer any final questions.
Thank you, Phyllis. That was a great update. Any questions for Phyllis? Moving right along. Item number six, well access agreement with Valerie.
Thanks, Chair Alamo. So the well access agreement is in, I think it's the very last page of the packet that was included. And you'll notice that it isn't, although it's in final form, it, it is not with a specific landowner. So we're bringing you kind of this well access agreement to approve in form or consider approving in form today. The reason we've developed it is that DWR requires each GSA to have a well access agreement with landowners whose land we have a monitoring well on because they want sustained and prolonged data. They don't want the land to sell and then, and then have us not be able to access the, the monitoring wells that we, that we have. And we, they want consistent data. So any of the monitoring wells we use, DWR wants us to have an access agreement to access the wells and to be able to get the monitoring data and calibrate those wells. So in your packet, you see this access agreement for install and monitoring groundwater wells. This is an agreement that could be entered into by either the east or the west, but we are putting it to the West Turlock GSA for form approval today. It discusses how we, as a GSA, will be able to access the site. It discusses the state of California, provided funding for some of these monitoring wells, and when it should be effective and that everyone should indemnify the other party for any issues or, or land damage, that kind of thing. So it's pretty standard. If there's questions on it, I'm happy to take them. It will require recording on the deed, so we have that continuity. This, we're bringing this, like I said, for approval in form. If in negotiating with landowners, any of the terms change, we would need to bring that back to this board before we execute it. So I'm looking for any questions, any thoughts, but approval, a motion to approve as to form this well access agreement. And like I said, we, if, if anyone in the negotiation or execution of that, the terms change, this board would have to have it, we would have to bring it back to this board for approval. But thoughts or questions? Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve as to form.
Any thoughts or questions for Valerie?
This seems okay to me. Motion from Kiesa.
I'll second.
The well access agreement has been moved and seconded as to the form of it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Well access agreement, motion passes.
Thank you.
That concludes all our action items. We will entertain any comments from the board at this time.
I just want to say how pleased I am with the work that the TAC is doing, all the information. Phyllis, thank you very much. Very insightful.
Thank you.
Here are no other comments from the board. I'll declare this meeting in the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA adjourned. Their next meeting, planned meeting will be held May the 6th, 2021. Thank you all.